To dispense with the reading of the Governor's proclamation.
Without objection, so ordered. Chairman of the Rules Committee, Representative Hill of Washington is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the permanent rules of order of the House of Representatives of the 111th General Assembly be adopted as the permanent rules of order for the first extraordinary session with the caveat that those rules be adjusted to reflect the set of rule suspensions that we traditionally call the flow motion and those rules are spread on the members' desk. I make that motion.
You've heard the motion. Any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Chairman Stewart, you're recognized for a question for the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I don't want, I know this, the answer. These rules are the same rules that we've used in past years. There's no difference. Fair?
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, that's correct. These are the exact rules that the body was operating under since the beginning of the 111th General Assembly with the traditional flow motion built in.
Thank you. Any further objection? Okay, without objection then, so ordered, you do adopt. The next door of business is the election of Speaker of the House of Representatives. I now declare that the nominations are in order for the office of Speaker. Representative Terry, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It is my honor and privilege to nominate my good friend, the Honorable Cameron Sexton of Crossville, to be the next Speaker of the House of the great state of Tennessee.
You have heard the nomination. Do I hear a second? Representative Todd.
Mr. Speaker, I proudly second that motion.
That's a proper motion, is properly seconded. Are there further nominations? Assistant Leader Gant, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that nomination cease and the clerk be directed to call the roll.
You've heard the motion. Do I hear a second? Properly seconded. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, proceed with the calling of the roll.
Representatives Baum, Beck, Boyd, Bricken.
Mr. Clerk, if I may say, we are now electing the Speaker. We have one nominee. If you are voting for that person for Speaker, you need to say their name. We're not taking rolls. So, same here in present. If we had a representative here, they'd be elected right now. So, Mr. Clerk, would you start the vote again?
Representatives Baum, Beck, Boyd, Bricken, Byrd, Calfey, Camper, Carr, Carter, Cassidy, Dixie, Doggett, Dunn.
Sexton.
Eldridge, Phazen, Farmer, Freeman, Gant, Garrett, Griffey, Hakeem, Halford, Hall, Hardaway, Haston, Hawke, Hazelwood, Hilton, Hicks, Hill of Washington, Hill of Sullivan, Hodges, Hoseclaw, Holt, Howe, Halsey, Hurt, Jernigan, Johnson of Montgomery, Johnson of Knox, Keasling, Kumar, Lafferty, Lamar, Lambeth, Leatherwood, Littleton, Love, Lynn, Marsh, Miller, Mitchell, Moody, Moon, Ogles, Parkinson, Potts, Powell, Powers, Reagan, Ramsey, Reedy, Rudd, Rutter, Russell, Sanderson, Sexton of Cumberland, Sexton of Granger, Shaw, Sherrill, Smith, Sparks, Staples, Stewart, Terry, Thompson, Tillis, Todd, Towns, Travis, Van Hus, Vaughn, Weaver, White, Witson, Williams, Wendell, Wright, Zachary.
Mr. Clerk, please announce the vote.
Mr. Speaker, 94 votes for Representative Cameron Sexton, two present non-voting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Having received a majority of the votes cast, I hereby declare the Honorable Cameron Sexton of Cumberland County duly, legally, and constitutionally elected Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 111th General Assembly. Without objection, the motion to reconsider goes to the table.
Okay, go raise your right hand, please, sir. Please repeat after me. Aye, Cameron Sexton do solemnly swear.
Aye, Cameron Sexton do solemnly swear.
As Speaker of the House of Representatives.
As Speaker of the House of Representatives.
For the State of Tennessee, for the 111th General Assembly.
For the State of Tennessee and the 111th General Assembly.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
That will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And to truly and faithfully.
And to truly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the office.
To discharge the duties of the office.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You can get pictures. Mr. Speaker, Sexton, you are recognized for remarks.
Thank you. What a good day this is. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the family and my friends, colleagues, and all those in attendance. I did hear that Speaker here is a very good fellow, but he apologizes that he was not be able to make that vote today. I would like to say that, to Speaker Bill Dunn, thank you for your service in being the most successful speaker we've had on creating jobs on the per-day basis, that you were the Speaker of the House of Representatives. During the War of 1812, the federal government issued a call for 2,800 volunteers from Tennessee to preserve the honor and dignity of our country when the United States declared war on Great Britain. Thirty thousand Tennesseans. Thirty thousand Tennesseans answered the call, and we would forever be known from that point forward as the Volunteer State. Over the last 207 years, Tennesseans continue to answer the call, whether it was the 32 Tennesseans who gave their life for the independence of Texas at the Alamo, or Tennesseans like Ann Dallas Dudley, Abby Crawford Milton, Sue Shelton White, Lyddie Merriweather, and Representative Harry T. Byrne, who answered the call from his mother, Feb., in making Tennessee the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, giving women everywhere the legal right to vote. Today, we are here to answer our call, a call to work together for the betterment of Tennessee and our people. We all represent 65,000 Tennesseans who have bestowed a great trust on us to lead. Our job as representatives is to represent, serving the voices for all Tennesseans, from west to middle to east, rural to urban. Our call is to lead our great state in better shape than when we first arrived. We have paved a successful path forward over the years: record job growth, historically low unemployment, the lowest debt state in America, and the most physically responsible state in the Union. Success today does not necessarily mean success tomorrow. By answering the call to work together, respecting each other, and communicating effectively, we will stay true to what has made Tennessee successful. We should strive to work together as a body, as we should strive to work with our counterparts in the Senate, maintaining our uniformity as well as our independence as part of the legislative body. We must always be willing to work and communicate openly with the executive branch while keeping in mind that our Constitution is very detailed on the role and duties of each branch of government. Preserving our individualism as a separate branch is what our founders requested us to do. The good news is, we agree on a lot more than we disagree on. We all want great schools, great jobs, great infrastructure, and great healthcare. The challenge is, we will not always agree on the pathway to get there, but together we will get there. In this chamber, I will always encourage robust but respectful debate on the pathway to the shared goals of all Tennesseans. Debate and conversations make us stronger. Respect for those on the other side will make us better in our legislative lives at home and in our communities. My promise as Speaker is simple: we won't always agree on every issue, but I will always make sure that your voice is heard. When we look back on our service in this historic body, we all want to be remembered for the successes and accomplishments. If we're going to dwell, let's dwell on the good, on our future, and the Tennesseans who have always answered the call before us. Again, we have many great examples of Tennesseans answering the call, like Robert R. Church Sr. After the 1878 yellow fever epidemic, Memphis has lost much of its tax base, and the city was forced to give up its city's charter. Mr. Church was the first citizen to buy a bond in 1893 to restore the charter. Robert R. Church Sr. dedicated his life to the city of Memphis and was always willing to be the first one to step forward and answer the call. As we are assembled here today, I challenge you to believe in yourself, believe in our purpose, believe in our service, and believe in our great state. I stand here today, answering the call with you. Thank you, and God bless us. Leader Lambeth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and it is a phenomenal honor to say that. We are waiting on the Senate, so they are sending over some paperwork, and I apologize for the delay. I think we may go into some other orders first, but we were waiting on something to come over from the Senate. So, members, that's what we were meeting on up there, just wanted to announce to everyone that's what the delay is. Sorry about that.
Representative Garrett, you're recognized in the well. Next order, Mr. Clerk.
Welcoming and honoring.
Representative Garrett, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I request that the Sergeant-at-Arms escort our guest into the chamber. Mr. Speaker, I request the clerk read House Joint Resolution 22.
As requested. Mr. Clerk.
House Joint Resolution 22 of the First Extraordinary Session by Representative Garrett and others, a resolution to honor and commend Coach Tim Corbin and the Vanderbilt Commodores upon winning the 2019 NCAA College World Series, whereas we are pleased to honor and commend those extraordinary athletic teams that through their magnificent exploits bring honor to the State of Tennessee and serve as exceptional ambassadors of this state, and whereas the Commodores of Vanderbilt University recently completed the greatest season in the history of the university's baseball program as the team captured the 2019 College World Series to win the NCAA Baseball Championship, and whereas led by Coach Tim Corbin, the Vandy Boys won their second national championship as they defeated the Michigan Wolverines 8-2 at TD Ameritrade Park in Omaha, Nebraska on June 26, 2019, whereas the Vandy Boys' quality pitching and high-powered offense conquered and prevailed over every foe as they also captured both the Southeastern Conference regular season and the tournament titles for the first time since 2007, becoming the first SEC team to defeat every other SEC team at least once in the same season, and whereas the Vanderbilt Commodores advanced to the College World Series Final to face the University of Michigan Wolverines, and whereas securing their national championship with an 8-2 win, the Vandy Boys proved that they are a team and a program for the ages, whereas the 2019 SEC Coach of the Year, Coach Tim Corbin, was also fittingly honored as the National Coach of the Year by the American Baseball Coaches Association and the Collegiate Baseball. He has led Vanderbilt to 15 NCAA tournaments, nine super regionals, and four College World Series while posting a 740-354 and 1 record at Vandy, and whereas the members of the General Assembly and the Commodore Nation take great pride in honoring this extraordinary group of young men who have indelibly written their names for all the time into the annals of the College World Series as national champions, now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 111th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, the Senate concurring that we honor and congratulate Coach Tim Corbin and the Vanderbilt University Commodores upon winning the 2019 NCAA College World Series, and extend to them our best wishes for every future success.
Representative Garrett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to congratulate Tim Corbin and the Vandy Boys for their national championship and the College World Series for 2019. Give a little bit of history of why I know this fine gentleman. Many of you know, you may not know, but I have a little infatuation with baseball myself. When I ran for this office, I was hoping the one thing that I could keep was remain president of Gilittsville Little League Baseball. We joined Gilittsville Little League Baseball in 2011, and 2012, we made the first appearance in the Little League World Series, the first team in Tennessee to do that since 1982. Well, I was a coach then, and I wanted to get a group of folks up there to go see our team compete in the Little League World Series. I wanted to have a plane full of kids to go up there with us to watch. There was one kid that we thought might want to join us. We called the big kid. One of our parents said, "What if Coach Corbin would want to go?" Well, we didn't know Coach Corbin at the time, and we called his office, and he said, "Well, if you go on this particular day, he'll go." So we called him out on it. We said, "We're going up there, can you go?" Coach Corbin got on a plane with nine of us, with six kids, three adults, rode in the cockpit, if I remember correctly, and was literally the biggest kid on that plane to watch us, watch our kids, our 12-year-olds in Gilittsville Little League Baseball. So since then, Coach Corbin and I have kind of struck up a friendship. So, to tell you a little bit about his history, he joined the Vanderbilt Baseball Club in 2003, and since 1968 up until 2003, Vanderbilt went on to one NCAA postseason tournament. Since 2003, Coach Corbin has taken over the reins. Since 2003 up until now, they've missed one year of going to the NCAA. They're twice College World Series champions. And I can tell you this, Tim and his wife Maggie are humble folks. I'm probably making them a little bit nervous, talking about him so much when he's up here. His relationship that he has with his players is an absolute phenomenon, how he treats them, how he makes sure what's important to them, not only to compete on the baseball field, to make sure they succeed in life. So it is my honor, it's John Ray Clemmons and I honor, since Vanderbilt is in his district, it's our honor to honor this man, Tim Corbin, as the national champion for the College World Series in 2019. Please give him a hand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Listen, I know you have a whole lot more important business than to honor Vanderbilt University, but it is a privilege, first of all, to be in the Capitol, and secondly, it is a privilege to be honored by you all. Our trajectory has always been pointed at the development of kids and using baseball as a foundation to do so. Simply, we're glad to be a small extension of the university and one of its programs, but also, since Maggie and I have been here now going on our 18th year, we feel like this is home, and we're glad in some small way that we can add to the city as well. So I appreciate you taking today as a time to honor Vanderbilt University and specifically our baseball program. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Mr. Speaker, would you come down for the picture?
Yeah.
Did we ever pass the resolution?
I think we're going to.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I request that the Sergeant-at-Arms escort our guests into the chamber.
Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms, escort the guests to the well. Representative Hakeem, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would ask that the local delegation from Hamilton County, if you would come up, and Mr. Speaker, I would ask that the clerk, request that the clerk read House Joint Resolution 517.
Mr. Clerk, read the resolution.
House Joint Resolution 517 by Representative Hakeem from the regular session, a resolution to honor and commend Albert Woodard upon the induction into the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, Gary W. Rollins College of Business Entrepreneurship Hall of Fame, whereas it is fitting that the members of this General Assembly should salute those citizens who through their extraordinary efforts have distinguished themselves as community leaders of whom we can all be proud, and whereas one such noteworthy person is the businessman Albert Woodard, who was recently inducted into the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga, Gary W. Rollins College of Business Entrepreneurship Hall of Fame, in recognition of the lasting impact he has made in and around Chattanooga, and whereas born and raised in Summit, Mr. Woodard received a Bachelor of Science degree in engineering from UTC and his Master's of Business Administration degree from Georgia State University School of Business Administration, and whereas Albert Woodard began his professional career as a system engineer at IBM, where he designed, developed, deployed, and supported computer systems for several large and medium-sized businesses. It was during this seven-year tenure at IBM that he was first introduced to the healthcare industry, as he implemented and supported computer systems for a number of hospitals and insurance companies, and whereas no stranger to honors and awards, Albert Woodard has been recognized by the State of Tennessee as Minority Businessman of the Year and is a recipient of the Outstanding Achievements Awards, and he is named Minority Businessman of the Year, Atlanta Region, by the U.S. Department of Commerce. He was named the 2006 Top Black Entrepreneur by Engineer in Information Technology Magazine, and whereas Mr. Woodard epitomizes the spirit and commitment that are characteristics of a true Tennessean, and whereas the members of this General Assembly find it appropriate to acknowledge and applaud Albert Woodard for his dedication to the State of Tennessee and its citizens, now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives of the 111th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, the Senate concurring that we honor and commend Albert Woodard upon his induction into the University of Tennessee, Chattanooga, Gary W. Rollins College of Business Entrepreneurship Hall of Fame, and extending him our best wishes for continued success in his future endeavors.
Representative Hakeem, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, let me congratulate you, if I may be out of order, but I want to do that, and say to my colleagues and to friends who are here, let me first give praise and thanks to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for allowing us to be here today and doing God's work, God's will. And let me say, if I may, about Mr. Woodard, he's one of those individuals that, we hear those sayings about pull yourself up by your bootstraps, taking what God has given you and make the most out of it. He is one of those individuals, and he's a humble person, he's a generous person, and he has shared his knowledge, understanding with so many young people and with others throughout the State of Tennessee, and we want to recognize him for that. I'm going to be very brief and see if any of my colleagues want to make any comments before we ask to come right ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Representative Hazelwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It's just an honor to be up here this morning with someone who has done so much for the community and has just lived such an exemplary life, so we are proud that he's a Hamilton Countyan. He doesn't live in my district, but I would hope that he would correct that in the near future. Love to have you, but we're just proud of you. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Mr. Speaker, I would request that Mr. Woodard be allowed to make a couple of comments, after which, if you would honor us by coming down and taking a picture with us, we'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Woodard, you're recognized.
I'm proud to, to be injected in the history of Tennessee on this day, and I'm proud to be part of the, the great citizens that have served this great state in the past. I'm also proud to be an American, and I hope that one day, 100 years from now, people will look back at the history and the family of, the history of my family and will speak of us with honor and dignity and respect. Thank you all very much. I am humbled and honored, and, and I love being here with you. Thank you very much.
Representative Hurt, you're recognized at your seat. Oh, recognized at the well.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think all, most, if not all of you are aware of the tragedy that occurred at the West Tennessee State Penitentiary a couple of weeks ago in Lawdell County. I come before you today to honor Ms. Johnson and her service to the state of Tennessee, and I would ask that we all stand. Representative Dixie wants to say a few words. She actually lived in his district, so we're going to say a few words and be followed by a moment of silence with a prayer.
All right, thank you. Ms. Johnson, she was one of my constituents, actually lived around the corner from me. Even though she worked several hours away from Nashville, she was a mainstay in Nashville with her work and attendance at 15th Avenue Baptist. Her son, he had, we attended the same high school. Her sister, we went to the Y together, so she was a mainstay in Nashville. So, it was a great loss, not only to the Department of Corrections community, but to Nashville as a whole. So, I appreciate you for recognizing her right now, and let's have a moment of silence. And after the moment of silence, I would ask Representative DeBarry to give us a short prayer for her family and her friends. Thank you. Representative DeBarry?
Let's bow together. Merciful God, our Father in heaven, we come before you as men and women of this state, of this community, with heavy hearts, broken spirits, but a heightened resolve to call upon you for your help and for your wisdom. Father, we know that you told us a long time ago that evil men and seducers would wax worse and worse, and that perilous times would surely come. Father, we come with bowed heads for the family of Ms. Johnson. We come, Father, because they have had a great loss. This community has had a great loss. We realize that there will always be those who don't respect life and well-being of others, so we ask you for grace and for mercy, but more so, Father, we ask you for courage and wisdom, so that we will have the good common sense and decency to protect our citizens and our republic. Give us good sense, Father, to do what we must, to hold those accountable who violate the laws of our society, and see to it that they pay quickly and fully their debt to that society. Help us also, Father, always to be fair, deliberate, and just, people who follow the golden rule and the rule of law. We thank you for all that you have done. Please take care of this family, Father. Please look down upon them and take care of them, and be with us in this room. We ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We also, we also have a resolution, and I would ask that if you feel so, move to sign on as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Leader Lambert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and if the representative wanted to renew that motion prior to the passage of the consent counter and ask that all members be added that voting the affirmative is co-prime sponsors, I would certainly have no objection. I hope that Leader Camper would not as well.
Thank you. Leader Lambert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of SJR number 40.
Mr. Clerk, please read the caption.
Senate Joint Resolution 40 by Leader Lambert and others, a resolution relative to adjourned signing die the first extraordinary session of the 111 General Assembly.
You have heard the caption. Are there any objections? Representative Stewart?
Yes, and Leader Lambert and I have talked, and I just want to confirm with him that while this is the adjournment motion or the adjournment resolution, that is not the same as the adjournment motion. Obviously, we still have business to conduct, and this act of voting for this merely authorizes the close of this special session. It doesn't adjourn our activities. Is that correct?
Leader Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, that is exactly correct. This is a procedural adjournment motion that we normally do on the last day of session. As this is anticipated, obviously, to be a one-day session, then this would allow for a motion to adjourn at a later date in the proceedings, not at this juncture. We certainly do have business still to attend to.
Without objection, the rules are suspended. Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to concur in SJR number 40.
Leader Lambert moves to concur in Senate Joint Resolution 40, properly second. Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of Senate Joint Resolution 40 say aye. Those opposed say no. I hereby declare it concurred. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for actually recognizing me. I wanted to, and congratulations. I want to tell the members, uh, my name is Antonio Parkinson. For those of you that didn't recognize me, and I wanted to give the speaker his first opportunity to rule somebody out of order. So, there you go, Mr. Speaker. Let's see it. Rule me out of order, Mr. Speaker.
Not today, Representative Parkinson. Nice try, I appreciate that. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number One.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution One by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Evidence promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objections, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number One.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution One by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection to the question, seeing none. All those in favor of HR One, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? My... Camper. Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 96, no names.
HR One, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Two.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Two by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, the rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Two.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Two, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Three.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Three by Representative Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Civil Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Three.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye. When the bell rings, all those vote no. Any member wish to cast their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Three, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Four.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Four by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Four.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Four, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye. When the bell rings, all those vote no. Any member wish to cast their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Four, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Four.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR One, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Three, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Four.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Two, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Three.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Three by Representative Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, the rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Two.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Two, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Three.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Three by Representative Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Three.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Three, vote aye. When the bell rings, all those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Three.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Three by Representative Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Three.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Three, vote aye. When the bell rings, all those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Three, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Four.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Four by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of HR Number One.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR One, properly second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Without objection to the question, seeing none. All those in favor of HR One, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? My... Camper. Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 96, no names.
HR One, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Two.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Two, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? My... Camper. Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Four.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of HR Two, vote aye. When the bell rings, those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, 97, no names.
HR Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider it is tabled. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Four.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Four by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions of Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter 3, Part 4.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Three.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of HR Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye. When the bell rings, all those vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk. Without objection, the motion to reconsider is tabled. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Two.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Two by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions to Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter Three, Part Four.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, the rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Two.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of H.R. Two, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of H.R. Two, vote aye when the bell rings. Those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Take the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Ayes, ninety-seven, no nays.
H.R. Two, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection to the motion, to reconsider is tabled. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Three.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Three by Representative Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions to Tennessee Rules of Juvenile Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter Three, Part Four.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without objection, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Three.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of H.R. Three, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor of H.R. Three, vote aye when the bell rings. All those opposed, vote no. Has every member cast their vote? Any member wish to change their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, ninety-seven, no nays.
H.R. Three, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to reconsider is tabled. Representative Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for immediate introduction in consideration of House Resolution Number Four.
Mr. Clerk, read the caption.
House Resolution Four by Chairman Curcio, Resolution approving amendments and revisions to Tennessee Rules of Civil Procedure promulgated by the Supreme Court of Tennessee pursuant to the provisions of Tennessee Code Annotated Title 16, Chapter Three, Part Four.
You've heard the caption. Are there any objections? Without any objections, those rules are suspended. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move adoption of House Resolution Number Four.
Representative Curcio moves adoption of H.R. Four, properly second. Any discussion? Any objection to the question? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye when the bell rings. All those vote no. Any member wish to cast their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, ninety-seven, no nays.
H.R. Four, having received constitutional majority, I hereby declare it adopted. Without objection, the motion to table is reconsidered, tabled. Thank you, Representative. Chairman Curcio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and members, due to a pending Attorney General's opinion that has been requested, I move that House Resolution Number Six be referred to the Judiciary Committee.
That's properly motion, properly second. There is objection, so we're on discussion. If you'd like to be recognized, please raise your hand. Representative Stewart.
Thank you. And it's a debatable motion. I appreciate you recognizing me, Mr. Speaker. I don't think, I received documentation yesterday that there is a motion to expel to be brought before us. I don't think, and I don't think this motion is in proper order. I don't think we need resolution by the Attorney General of the opinion that was requested. I'm not sure why the Attorney General hasn't produced that yet, but I don't think we need to delay on this any further. I'm sure other people will have more to say on it. I think the facts are before us. We have enough to make a decision. There's no need for delay tactics. There's no need to slow down here. We don't need to refer things. We need to just proceed and move forward with this issue. You know, I don't think there was any new information brought forward in the Attorney General Opinion request regarding the Byrd issue. I think we have people, as we all know, that have notified us that they are going to bring a motion to the floor today for expulsion. They should be permitted to do that. Obviously, this motion has no effect on that in any event, but I'm not sure why we need this preliminary matter. It seems to me it's nothing more than a procedural effort to create a cluttered record. So I don't think the Attorney General Opinion should be used as an excuse for further delay tactics. We need to move forward today on this issue. Thank you.
Chairman Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And to the gentleman from Davidson County, I couldn't agree more that these are very serious allegations. I want to be clear, you mentioned a motion to expel. That's not what we're dealing with here. This is the House Resolution Number Six, brought, I believe, by Representative Johnson. So there's not been a motion made. This is the resolution. And as I understand it, outside the call of this session, we would need to refer that to judiciary.
Representative Stewart.
And I guess my understanding is that resolution was not put forward on the calendar. I guess what I hear you saying is you're not suggesting that a motion to expel is out of order. So I'm not sure why we're even proceeding with what you're doing to send this back to the judiciary. It seems to me that we know that we can resolve this issue today. And to me, if this becomes an excuse for delay, then that's improper. We need to address this today. There's nothing in the Attorney General Opinion when it comes to us that will change our rights under the Constitution. There's really nothing that will be germane to our decision-making process. So first of all, since this, first of all, I don't see the purpose of this motion. Second of all, I don't see it as really appropriate. And third, I hear you saying that Representative Johnson will be free today to bring an expulsion motion as she told us all yesterday, pardon me, as she told us yesterday that she would do. And I'm glad you have confirmed that because I wouldn't want this to be looked at in retrospect as some form of delay tactic or procedural maneuver to prevent that. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you explain why this was not on calendar, please?
Mr. Speaker, items filed that are not congratulatory and memorializing go through, once they're introduced, they go through the committee system. And if they were passed by the subcommittee and the full committee, and then there's no fiscal concerns, and it goes through finance, and then it is calendared by calendar and rules. That process has not happened with this resolution. There's been a lot of questions about why it was not on a calendar for today, and that is the reason. It is not congratulatory, it's not a congratulatory item like the consent items that are spread on your desk, and it hasn't gone through the regular committee process under our rules to go through calendar rules to be scheduled for a hearing on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And again, to the gentleman from Davidson County, part of the reason why I believe this motion is necessary to send this to the Judiciary Committee is so that we can have due process, so that these discussions can be had in the open on the record. And that would be the purpose behind this. So I appreciate, I think we're agreeing that a delay tactic would be out of order and completely inappropriate, that what we want to do is to make sure that we have due process and that we hear exactly what the allegations are. If you read the resolution, it actually says, in summary, that we're pursuant to its authority under Article Two, Section Twelve of the Tennessee Constitution, "This body expels David Byrd to the Seventy-First Representative District from his seat as a member of the House of Representatives, the One Hundred Eleventh General Assembly in the state of Tennessee for disorderly behavior as described by credible victims in multiple reports." Disorderly behavior sounds to me like something much less serious than what we're talking about here. And so I want to make sure the Judiciary Committee has the opportunity to hear these accusations and do a full investigation.
Representative Stewart.
So the public is clear as they're listening to us, though. It sounds like you agree with me that under the Constitution, an expulsion order, an expulsion mechanism exists on the floor of this House. In other words, a motion to expel made on the House floor today is valid. Wouldn't you agree with that? That's what the Constitution permits.
Representative Curcio.
What you're saying is correct.
Representative Stewart.
And I'll tell you, with respect to the due process issue, the problem is that due process requires the person who, at whom this is directed, to come forward and give a forthright testimony about what occurred. If that's what gives you the right to due process, and the problem is that hasn't happened. So I would say in this case, the opportunity for due process has existed, but it has been rejected or forfeited.
Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, to my friend from Davidson County, what I would remind the body and the state of Tennessee is that if this goes to the Judiciary Committee, we will have the opportunity, subpoenas can be issued if necessary, to make sure that those folks come forward and that we can have due process.
Representative Johnson, you're recognized.
I think it's important to note that the question to the AG doesn't involve everything that happened during session. It talks about what happened before, and so it really isn't all encompassing of what the charges are. So I think it's important that we need to go ahead and move on this today and talk about this issue.
Representative Clemmons, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And preliminary inquiry, it's been explained to me that any resolution introduced for the purpose of this special session is specifically for this special session and not moving forward. Therefore, once we adjourn, if we adjourn this special session today, then those resolutions are off the table. So if we're going to have a Judiciary Committee on a resolution that was introduced for today's special session, are we going to, are we not going to adjourn today? Are we going to hold a Judiciary Committee this afternoon before we adjourn? How is this going to take place and how should it take place for the purpose of a resolution introduced specifically for this special session?
Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And to my friend from Davidson County, it would be my intention to send this resolution to judiciary. You are correct. Once we adjourn Sonny Dye today, this session and its resolutions are officially over. But at that point, the Judiciary Committee would take up an investigation. We would conduct that investigation and then issue a report. Once that report is issued, then when we come back into session at a later date, presumably in January, it would be up to any number of members of this body to introduce a subsequent resolution that would then act on that report with due process having taken place.
Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate that explanation. However, the resolution that was introduced specifically for the purpose of this session was referenced in the motion. Therefore, what is the basis or the hook to make sure that that judiciary investigation takes place? Is the judiciary chairman going to take this up on his own initiative? Because once we adjourn Sonny Dye, that resolution will no longer exist. So is it your intention, or the judiciary chairman, whoever that may be's intention, to take this up in due haste?
Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to tell you and anybody else who's listening, it is absolutely my intention to take this up.
Representative Clemmons.
Prior to January twenty twenty.
Representative Curcio.
As quickly as our speaker will allow me.
Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think this may be more of a question to the speaker than it is to the chairman of the committee. We're all here. The victims have waited for years. We're all here. Let's have the judiciary committee meet today, and let's move forward. You know, no time than now. Let's do this. Let's get it behind us. Let's restore order. Let's restore integrity into this House, and let's move forward with our work for the state of Tennessee. Let's clean up our house and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I could, for the chairman who just said that his intent is to convene his committee, is the intention to convene this committee and you as chairman, put the member that this is alleged against, as well as the victims who have made these allegations under oath and compel them to testify? And if so, will that also be in a public manner and not done behind closed doors?
Representative Curcio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That is exactly my intention.
Representative Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be called on for the first time before I go to somebody for the second? Seeing none. Representative Johnson.
This really feels like a delay tactic to me, and we have victims here. They've been here for a long time, and I feel like that we can't ask them to wait any longer for a solution of this and for us to do what we need to do and hear this issue. Because we've got folks out there who are victims of sexual assault, students in schools, they're waiting, they've been waiting a long time. Some of them, it took a long time to come forward. I listened last night to story after story of victims. They're here tonight in the balconies. It's very hard for them to be here, and we're going to ask them to wait longer? I just think that's not the right thing to do.
Anyone else wish to be recognized? Seeing none. Without objection. We have objection? We are voting on the motion to refer House Resolution Six to the Judiciary Committee. All those in favor, vote aye when the bell rings. All those opposed, vote no. Has every member voted? All right. Any member wish to change their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, seventy-one, twenty-six, nays.
The motion prevails. Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk, next order.
Introduction of Resolutions.
Leader Lambert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I will remind the body, this is virtually exactly what just happened in the procedure we just did. But I move that all resolutions properly filed be introduced pursuant to Rule Number Seventeen and placed on the consent calendar or referred to the appropriate standing committee.
Without objection, so ordered. Next order, Mr. Clerk.
Senate Joint Resolutions congratulatory memorializing.
Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that all Senate Joint Resolutions congratulatory memorializing lying on the desk be placed on the consent calendar pursuant to Rule Number Seventeen.
Without objection, so ordered. Next order, Mr. Clerk.
Resolutions lying over introduction of bills, Senate bills on first consideration, Senate bills on second consideration, House bills on second consideration, petitions and memorials, reports from standing committees, reports from select committees' calendars. Mr. Speaker, the House has a consent calendar.
Chairman Zachary, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move passage of the consent calendar on third and final consideration in keeping with Rule Fifty.
Gentleman moves passage of the consent calendar, properly second. Mr. Clerk, have any objections been filed?
Mr. Speaker, no objections filed.
Anyone seeking recognition on the consent calendar? Representative Staples.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. After conferring with leadership, I would ask Item Twelve, House Resolution Seventy Seventeen, that members of the Knox County delegation and members of the Black Caucus that vote in affirmative be listed as co-prime sponsors.
Without objection, exclusions noted, so ordered. Representative Dixie, you're recognized.
On, thank you, Mr. Speaker. On number, House, on number one, I ask that the Davidson County delegation and all those voting in affirmative be listed as co-prime sponsors.
With objection.
Davidson County being listed first.
Without objection, exclusions noted. Leader Lambert.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. I'd ask the representative to clarify the motion. I believe the motion that was going to be made, since all of us have honored the loss of this beautiful life and this wonderful state employee, is that all members voting in affirmative be added as co-prime sponsor with no distinction between what priority they would be placed upon the resolution. Is that accurate, Mr. Rep?
Representative Dixie.
That's accurate. That's fine. Thank you.
Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Without objection, exclusions noted, as ordered. Anyone else? Representative Hurt.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And this is a little bit repetitive, but I want to make sure we covered it. After consulting with both leaders, I'd ask that every member that votes in the affirmative be added to H.R. Forty-five as co-prime sponsors.
Without objection, exclusions noted, so ordered. Representative Staples.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. One quick question for the clerk. Can we make comment on the Senate consent calendar at all? Well, that came across, that, yes.
Chairman Zachary, you're recognized in the well.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, if I could have your attention, I need to clarify the motion. We have been handed an additional consent calendar. We now have a total of three. So I move passage of consent calendar one, two, and three on third and final consideration in keeping with Rule Fifty. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Staples.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want, on consent calendar number three, I just wanted to, if I may please, sir, bring members' attention to number thirty-four, recognizing Brittany M. Anthony. A lot of members, staff, and lobbyists know Brittany Anthony. She's been a longtime staff member here. She's been an excellent staff member. She's never been mine, but she's Senator's Act Berry's, and she's moving on from government work to the private sector in September. So I just wanted to go on record, tell her, Brittany, thank you for your hard work, that you will be missed, and she was truly a treasure and a jewel of the House and the Senate. Thank you.
Anyone else? Representative Garrett.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd ask that everyone voting in the affirmative for the House Joint Resolution Number Seven Twenty-two honoring Coach Corbin and the Vandy Boys be added as co-prime sponsors. Mr. Speaker, thank you very much.
Without objection, exclusions noted, so ordered. Representative Hardaway at Representative Camper's desk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On item number twenty-nine on calendar three, Raskin on S.J.R. Seven Zero Two Nine, which recognizes Breonna Mason, Miss Tennessee of two thousand nineteen, that all those being recorded as voting in the affirmative be added to that S.J.R.
Without objection, exclusions noted, so ordered. Representative Powell, you wish to be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. On House Consent Calendar number three, item number fifteen, and conferring with both leaders, would ask that all members in the affirmative be listed as co-prime sponsors with female legislators being listed first.
Anyone else? Seeing none. We are voting on consent calendars, oh, sorry. Representative Stewart, you want to be, no, okay. We are voting on consent calendars, one, two, and three. All members in favor, vote aye when the bell rings. Those opposed, vote no. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, ninety-seven, no nays.
Having received the constitutional majority, I declare the consent calendar one, two, three, passed. Without objection, the motion to reconsider is tabled. Next order.
Unfinished business.
Any unfinished business? Representative Clemmons, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of immediate consideration and passage of House Resolution Ninety-eight.
Mr. Clerk, you're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, that resolution, and I'll read the caption, "A resolution to denounce and oppose hate groups, including white nationalists and neo-Nazi groups and their actions." That is not a congratulatory item, and it falls outside the call of the governor, so this resolution would not be in order.
Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, that's why we're suspending the rules, bringing this resolution. It is not a piece of legislation. It is simply a memorializing resolution to denounce hate groups.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, the reason this extraordinary session was called by the governor was to act upon resolutions necessary to ratify and approve pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Sixteen Three Four Oh Four, the amendments and revisions to the Tennessee Rules of Evidence, Tennessee Rules of Criminal Procedure, Tennessee Rules of Juvenile Procedure, and the Tennessee Rules of Civil Procedure, which were reported and filed with the General Assembly by the Chief Justice of Tennessee Supreme Court on January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. That was the legislation that was included in the governor's call. That is not something that this body can suspend. It's pursuant to Article Three, Section Nine of the Constitution.
Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like a definition of what a memorializing resolution is versus legislation. This is simply a resolution to denounce hate groups, including neo-Nazis. If you could distinguish between legislation and memorializing resolutions.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, congratulatory items are largely items such as what was just passed on three consent calendars, congratulating people for accomplishments or memorializing people who may have passed. uh, people who may have passed. There is language in this resolution that urges, um, certain entities to do certain things. Those resolutions that urge or take a, take a stance are items that usually go through the committee process. This is not a congratulatory, if this would have been filed in, in regular session, it would have gone through the committee process, and once again, it's outside the call of the governor.
Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This mandates nothing. It simply encourages and formally denounces hate groups. I fail to see the distinction between legislation and the purpose of this resolution. This seems to be an arbitrary decision by the clerk to prevent this from moving forward under this session.
Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate the representatives of Davidson County joining all the rest of us in denouncing hate groups. We did that during the session. We passed a resolution that went through the proper protocol. Just because he doesn't like the answer of what the rules are doesn't mean we get to change the Constitution here on the floor. The question has been asked and answered, and I would appreciate it if we would move on to whatever further business we have.
Representative Clemmons, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the position of the leader opposing this resolution, but I've been given a legal opinion, and there is a distinction between racism and anti-Semitism. We did not cover all hate groups in January. So, again, I move passage, immediate consideration of this. The body can so object as it wishes. I appreciate the attention, Mr. Speaker, to this motion. Thank you.
Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I needed counsel, I would hire a counselor, ask for it. I did not state that, sir, on the record. In fact, very clearly and unequivocally during the session, we all stood against all hate groups. We didn't just pick some and say we stand against them and say we're okay with all the rest, as you have in your resolution, sir. So whenever you want to join this body and stand against all hate groups, feel free.
Out of order. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, for the record, I have here an Attorney General's opinion eighty-four-dash-zero-zero-nine, and in it, it explains that resolutions on substantive matters not within the governor's proclamation may not be considered. However, resolutions on procedural and other non-substantial matters, as well as matters necessary to conduct the special session, are within the control of the General Assembly. House Resolution Ninety-eight does not fall within those definitions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Representative Stewart.
I call for the previous question.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, there's no motion before the body. That motion has been ruled out of order because it does not fit the call that called the special session.
Representative Stewart.
I had not heard it being ruled out of order. I had heard the motion, uh, being discussed, I'd, I'd heard a constitutional discussion. I thought that was just for the members to consider when they voted on Representative Clemmons' question. Uh, so I thought we should just vote, and members can decide what they want to do.
Representative Clemmons, would you like to restate your motion? Or withdraw it?
I appreciate the legal opinion. I would move for immediate passage of House Resolution, I've already forgotten the number, Ninety-eight.
Motion rules out of order. Representative Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Pursuant to Article Two, Section Twelve of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee, I move that Representative David Byrd of the Seventy-First Representative District be expelled from his seat as a member of the House of Representatives of the One Hundred-and-Eleventh General Assembly of the State of Tennessee for improper behavior, specifically assaulting underage students while serving as a trusted authority figure and continuing the crime through a cover-up that took place while he served in the legislature.
Any objection? Chairman Kersio, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and, uh, thank you, Madam Representative. Again, as we stated earlier, these allegations are very serious. And to the victims who are here today, to any Tennessean who is listening, in Tennessee, we believe in due process, and we will get to the bottom of this at a full judiciary hearing, and that is exactly what I've called for. And so pursuant to that, and because we are waiting on a pending general attorney, uh, Attorney General's opinion, I move the matter of expelling Representative Byrd to be referenced to the Judiciary Committee.
That's a proper motion, properly second. Any discussion? All right. We have objection. We are voting on referring the matter of expelling David Byrd to the judicial committee. All those in favor vote aye when the bell rings. All those opposed vote no. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Mr. Clerk, take the vote.
Ayes, seventy-one, twenty-five nays, one person not voting.
The motion prevails. Next order, Mr. Clerk.
Announcements.
Representative Faison.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, with your permission, I have two announcements. First of all, not to upstage you, but you have some incredible people here that I wanted us to make welcome. I see our little friend Greer and your beautiful wife and your family, and you, you've just got people all over from, and I, I just want the body to make them feel welcome, and, and they're here to celebrate their new speaker. Y'all make them feel welcome.
Chairman Faison.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Also, I've been asked to invite each one of you, if you would like to be part of the reception for our new speaker, you join us in the legislative lounge immediately following. We'd love to have you there. Come get some pictures, share your stories, and, uh, once again, make sure you congratulate this family and Speaker Sexton.
Representative Lamar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. All my female representatives, we are taking a picture at two o'clock here at the Capitol on the Capitol steps, so if you do have white, please wear a white, and we're doing it in honor of the Women's Suffrage Movement.
Thank you. Representative Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the interest and the spirit of bipartisanship, I think the only person who hasn't been congratulated today on their new position is Representative Jeremy Faison, the new caucus chairman of the GOP. Congratulations, Representative Faison.
Any further, Representative Camper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I know I'm out of order. I meant to wish someone a happy birthday. Their birthday is tomorrow. Her name is Irene Jones. Happy birthday, Irene.
Thank you. Representative Kumar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Congratulations. I'd like to welcome Alex Nazren from my district. He's a senior at Tennessee Tech and graduating, uh, next year in economics, has political aspiration. Let's make Alex feel welcome. He's at the back.
Any further announcements? Representative Hardaway at Representative Camper's desk.
Leader.
At Leader Camper's desk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, I want to do two things. One is that the Black Caucus will also, uh, convene at two so that we can do a group photo immediately after the ladies. And the other, Mr. Speaker, my baby girl, I call her Pretty Baby, Allison Clarice Hardaway, has a birthday coming up on the twenty-sixth, so she's going to be watching this. She, and this is the first public announcement that she's joined the Air Force, so she's serving our country. I'd like for you all to thank her for her service and congratulate her on her birthday.
Any further announcements? Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and as Representative Hardaway leaves the, the middle of the room, I think it would be entirely appropriate if he sang his baby girl a happy birthday greeting, don't you guys? I mean, that's up to him, but I think it would be appropriate.
Representative Hardaway, your name was called. Recognized at Leader Camper's desk.
Mr. Speaker, and I, I thank the leader, but I actually call her on her birthday, no matter where she is in the world, and I do sing happy birthday, so I'll only give you a couple of bars. If, if I can get Joe Towns, I need you to join me, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a duet. Representative Towns is recognized at his desk, as well as Hardaway at Leader Camper's.
Representative Hardaway, I don't believe that you would miss this prestigious opportunity to sing to your own baby. Now, you're going to have to get someone like me to help you sing to your child, but since I love her a lot better than you do, I guess, we're going to sing happy birthday.
All right, sing it really low, sir. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Allison. Happy birthday to you.
Representative Towns?
And many more.
Representative Carr, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Since we recognize everyone that had a birthday, I'd like for all to, uh, to say happy birthday to Representative Leatherwood, who had a birthday yesterday. I'll give him a round of applause.
Representative Garrett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure I can follow that, but I'd like to recognize my page today from my district, Andrew Williams, who's a sophomore at J.P. Two High School, so if you would welcome him. And I've got one more. My beautiful wife, Kara, is in the, is in the back as my guest today, so if you'd please welcome her as well. Thank you.
Representative Faison, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Republican House Caucus, directly following the reception for our new speaker, we will have a caucus meeting. It will be in the old Supreme Court.
Representative Parkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm still a little bit jealous that you ruled somebody else out of order, or the whole group, it's, you know, and not me, but, uh, I want to, um, recognize my new assistant, Kisa Fowler, who is the daughter of Vanessa Horner, and I hope everybody gets a chance to, to meet her. She's a sweet soul, and, um, looking forward to working with her for the next few years. I also want to congratulate our own London Lamar on bringing forth, she's about to bring forth a life. If you'll stand up, Representative Lamar, so we can recognize you in number two. Congratulations on, on your new baby.
Representative Ramsey, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and it is a great honor to address you with that label for the first time. Congratulations. I, I want to take a moment to, uh, mention, uh, someone who's had way beyond his share of birthdays, but, uh, on September third, David Wright will, will have another.
Representative Holt, you are recognized.
Thank you, Speaker Sexton. I would like to make welcome today my daughter, my oldest daughter, Josie. She's eleven years old. She's in sixth grade. She's a homeschooler. No better way to learn about history than experience it firsthand, so if y'all would, please help me make Josie feel welcome today.
Any further announcements? Members, we, I am going to announce the committees. Uh, we're going to announce the chairs, and then shortly thereafter today, later today, the updated on the, uh, members and where they are on their committees and subcommittees will come out. We're announcing the chairs. The rest will come out here in an hour or so to your email address. Naming Designating Private Acts. Chair, Wendell. Vice Chair, Sanderson. State Chair, Keasling. Vice Chair, Eldridge. Corrections Sub-Chair, Holesley. Public Service and Employees Sub-Chair, Reedy. Departments and Agencies Sub-Chair, Ramsey. Transportation. Chair, Howe. Vice Chair, Griffey. Infrastructure Sub-Chair, Whitson. Safety Sub-Chair, Weaver. Agriculture. Chair, Hallford. Vice Chair, Todd. Agriculture Sub-Chair, Holt. Calendar and Rules. Chair, Zachary. Vice Chair, Russell. Commerce. Chair, Timothy Hill. Vice Chair, Doggett. Business Sub-Chair, Travis. Utility Sub-Chair, Marsh. Banking and Investment Sub-Chair, Powers. Consumer and Human Resources. Chair, Boyd. Vice Chair, Bricken. Employee Sub-Chair, Holtclaw. Consumer Sub-Chair, Sparks. Education. Chair, White. Vice Chair, Hastings. Curriculum Sub-Chair, Moody. Higher Education Sub-Chair, Coley. K-Through-Twelve Sub-Chair, Reagan. Finance. Chair, Lynn. Vice Chair, Hazelwood. Finance Sub. Hicks. Appropriations Sub-Chair, Matthew Hill. Government Operations. Chair, Daniel. Vice Chair, Rutter. Health. Chair, Terry. Vice Chair, Helton. Facilities Licenseure and Regulation Sub-Chair, Vaughn. Public Health Sub-Chair, Jerry Sexton. Mental Health and Substance Abuse Sub-Chair, Kumar. Insurance. Chair, Smith. Vice Chair, Hall. Property and Casualty Sub-Chair, Jernigan. Teen Care Sub-Chair, Hawk. Life and Health Sub-Chair, Williams. Judiciary. Chair, Kersio. Vice Chair, Garrett. Civil Sub-Chair, Carter. Criminal Sub-Chair, Farmer. Children and Family Sub-Chair, Littleton. Constitutional Protection Sub-Chair, Van Hus. Local. Chair, Crawford. Vice Chair, Wright. Cities and Counties Sub-Chair, Moon. Property and Planning Sub-Chair, Carr. Elections and Campaigns Finance Sub-Chair, Rudd. Ethics. Chair, Curtis Johnson. Rules. Chair, Matthew Hill. Deputy Speaker, Curtis Johnson. Mr. Clerk? Next order.
Rogal.
Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Mr. Speaker, ninety-seven members present.
Next, next order, Mr. Clerk.
That completes the regular order, Mr. Speaker.
Leader Lambert, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the first legislative day and only of the first extraordinary session of the Journal of the House of Representatives and the proceeding thereof be approved.
Without, without objection, so ordered. Leader Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Pursuant to Senate Joint, Joint Resolution Number Forty, I move the first extraordinary session of the House of Representatives of the One Hundred-and-Eleventh General Assembly of the State of Tennessee adjourned, sunned and dined.
I hereby declare the first extraordinary session of the House of Representatives of the One Hundred-and-Eleventh General Assembly of the State of Tennessee adjourned, sunned and dined.